Good evening. It's time to bring Macomb Township Planning Commission meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October 1st. Time is seven o'clock. Please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Hardy.
Yes, sir. Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield is running late. Mr. Krasinski?
Here.
Mr. Shudo?
Here.
Mr. Provenzano?
Here.
And Michael Hardy, I'm here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
I am here as well.
Mr. Bentley?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bentley. I didn't see you there.
We still have a quorum. Thank you. Approval of the minutes. Tuesday, the September 17th. Meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, it's no additions, leashes, or corrections. I make a motion we accept the minutes as read.
Support. Motion by Mr. Shudo, supported by Mr. Provenzano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, this be amended agenda that we received, or?
We did, we did get correspondence from the township on an item that we originally didn't get, so you might want to amend that. Six C, I think was the, was the addition? The addition. Right. Yep.
So we'll add six C to the agenda, rezoning request for general commercial C2 to residential multiple family high density R2. So we'll add that to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion we accept the amended agenda.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Shudo, supported by Mr. Hardy with the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Six A. Site plan, temporary sales office and model parking. The park at Legacy Estates, Phase 3. Permanent parcel 0825-100025, located on south side of 22 Mile Road, west of North Avenue. Section 25 Southeast Michigan Land Holding LLC petitioner. Mr. Maher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicants are asking, you know, again, for a temporary sales office and model parking, not unlike most of the Lombardo developments that go into the community. We had no objections at this point to approval of the request.
Okay. Petitioner in the audience?
Hello?
Name an address.
Name an address?
Please.
Robert Pakorski, 13,123 Mile Road, Shelby Township.
Thank you. Anything you want to add to this?
No, I'm just here to ask, answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions on this item?
I have a question to the planner, Mr. Maher. How long can a temporary sales office be up? Is there any time limit, or?
You know, quite honestly, I don't know that offhand. Let me see if the ordinance reflects that.
That's fine, we can get back to it. I just was wondering if we had anything in place for a temporary structure as far as the sales. Let me ask the petitioner, you should probably have this up till you get a model, correct?
It is a model already. We already have the model permit. So we're just changing the garage into a sales office. There's no other structure. The only thing that'll be converted is the inside of the garage.
Okay.
It's really just the parking that the planning commission is considering tonight.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Maher, that's fine.
Anyone else getting questions? Okay, this time, I'll bring it to the public. Anyone in the public have anything on this item? Being done, I'll bring it back to the board for comments, motions.
I'll make the motion to approve the site plan for the temporary sales office and model parking. Permanent parcel 0825-100025.
Motion by Mr. Hardy to approve this. Do I got second on it?
Second.
By Mr. Provenzano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six B. Rezoning request, general commercial C2 to residential multiple family medium density R2. Permanent parcel 0807-300016, located on northeastern corner of 24 Mile Road and Hayes. Section 7, Selmar Center LLC petitioner. This was tabled from the September 17th meeting. Mr. Maher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, again, this request is from a C2 zoning to a R2 zoning, which is general commercial, and the applicant is asking for residential multiple family medium density. For all intent and purposes, the medium density means they can get one unit for every 5,000 square foot of land within the rezoning. The master plan does call for this corner to be a commercial corner at this point in time, and therefore it is inconsistent with the master plan. We recommend that the planning commission take public comments, ask any questions, and follow the standard procedure for a public hearing and postpone this for a final decision at your next meeting, unless you're comfortable making a decision tonight, obviously.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Tom Kalas, K-A-L-A-S, 31350 Telegraph Road, Suite 200, Bigham Farms, Michigan. I'm here this evening for the applicant, Selmar Center LLC. This property, as Mr. Maher indicated, is up before the planning commission this evening on our request to rezone, actually to downzone the property from its current C2 commercial use to an R2 residential multiple medium density use. The request is for the purposes of allowing my client to develop and use the property for R2 residential multiple apartment uses. These will be apartment buildings that are built with one and two bedroom units, and all will have attached garages. As you can see from the zoning map of that area, you have single-family residential to the east. You have a Comerica Bank right on the hard corner budding this property. You have a preschool daycare center just to the northwest of the property, and you have single-family residential to the north. On the south side, you also have multifamily, and on the west side, across from Hayes Road, you have a shopping center. Now, our position is that the current zoning of the property as C2 is improper. What we're proposing is a transitional zoning from a planning perspective, which makes more sense than a C2 zoning. As you can see, you have single-family to the, to the east of the property. We propose transitioning it to a residential multiple medium density with the R2, and then it transitions to the commercial, which is on the corner, and the CF that's also located on the property. The use is, is, you know, compatible with surrounding uses and zoning in the area. C2 is a zoning district that is not in demand along this area. There's plenty of C2 zoning throughout the township, plenty of retail centers that are built or being built, or C2 land that is sitting vacant and trying to be sold because there's really not that much demand for it. Whereas on the other hand, our proposed residential multiple, there is demand for that. As you all know, you know, apartments, these, you know, nice apartments with garages, one and two bedroom units with clubhouses and, you know, nice landscaping and nice aesthetics are in demand, and people, quite frankly, you know, can't afford to buy a $300,000 condo or more in Macomb Township, or a $400,000 plus home in Macomb Township. What this will do is it will provide housing for people who would like to reside in the township, albeit via rental, and allow them to locate in the township or relocate in the township from other areas. So we believe that our requested rezoning is compatible for that area. From a planning perspective, it makes more sense as a transitional zoning use, and that it would be in demand and marketable, and it's economically feasible to develop it for residential multiple. We would ask the planning commission to recommend approval of the rezoning requests. I am here to answer any questions. My client is also here to answer any questions you may have. And with that being said, we would open ourselves up to any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments on this item?
I have a question.
Mr. Bentley?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask our planner just a couple of questions in his review comments, just so I understand. In number six, is there sufficient land set aside within the township zone for our, it says R1 uses. I think we're talking R2.
There's actually two typos I wanted to bring up for the record, so, and maybe both of these will be something you address, so if I can put those on the record first. In item number four, the planner's comment should read, "The proposed zoning is inconsistent, not consistent with the master plan." In item number six, it should reference R2 uses, and quite frankly, I responded in my comments to the actual commercial designation rather than the R2 designation, the existing rather than the proposed. So when, when you get my revised comments, I'll address that.
Okay.
That was my question as to what, what is the availability of R2. As he was stating, the petitioner was stating, there, there isn't a need for R2 in this community, so I, I wanted to get some feedback from you as to the need for R2 and whether or not we've provided sufficient zoning for R2.
Well, the township has large areas of all of the multifamily uses, particularly on the west side of the community, but also in some of the newer areas on the east side. So we do have a, I think, a very sound percentage of multifamily. Whether or not you want to reexamine that, you know, certainly you can. You know, as for the C2 designation, the township went through a large expense during the master plan process, studied the amount of commercial necessary. Times have changed, markets have changed, so, you know, there is some indications that that may be, may have to be reexamined during your master plan process.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
If I may ask?
Yep.
Patrick. So what you're saying is that there is a use for this because of the change in the market?
I, you know, is there a use for, for the C2 or for the R2?
For the R2.
You know, I, I think there's a use for both zoning designations. I think, you know, the question comes down as to, you know, the current master plan designates us for C2 uses.
Right.
I think certainly it could sustain C2 uses.
Okay. What type of units are these, sir? If I may ask?
Well, these would, the proposed units would be, they're 10 buildings, or 15 buildings, 10 unit buildings. So if you drive around anywhere in Macomb County, you see these 10 and 12 unit buildings. You know, Mosheri builds them, Mike Chirkel builds them, my client builds them. So they would be very nice buildings of 10 units to the building. They would all have, you know, one or two car garages, one or two bedroom units, and it would be, you know, a development that would be, would, my client would take the steps to transition it into that area, realizing that, you know, we are surrounded by single-family residential. We do believe there's adequate commercial in the area, and that this use is something that is in demand in the township and in the county, and quite frankly, across the state of Michigan, and it's something that will be relatively quickly absorbed once it's built, as are similar type units throughout Macomb County.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to confirm with Mr. Maher, is it, is it true that R2 would allow 10-story structures in that zone?
R2H allows 10-story, R2 allows two-story buildings?
Just two-story.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And these would be limited to two stories?
Anyone else?
I'd just like to say, we're not really concerned about the buildings right now. We're concerned about the rezoning, correct?
This is zoning matter.
So what he says today?
Could be all changed.
Right, so we're just, our major concern, the resident's concern, is the rezoning request. Now, what kind of buildings are being built, or what, what could be built or can be built. We're just concerned tonight with what the petitioner wants to do with the property and what it is zoned right now.
My concern was that there wouldn't be any high-rise.
No, I, no, and that, that's, that's a good question, but I'm just saying as far as what he's going to build or what he's not going to build, our concern tonight is the rezoning request. And that was a good question, I'm glad you asked it, because I was going to bring that up too. So, thank you.
Mr. Maher?
Yes, sir.
Question, you indicated that one unit per 5,000 square feet is in the R2 zoning. Could you kind of clarify that for me?
Well, the zoning district is one of the criteria, and there's setbacks and other criteria that could impact density as well, based on the shape of the property, but basically what it says is for every unit that you put onto the site, you need 5,000 square foot of land area.
And when you call a unit, you're calling a living area?
Right, right. Each apartment would be considered a unit.
So typically, what's surrounding that property right now is three homes roughly per acre?
Correct.
I'm thinking in acres now. Okay, and there's how many acres of this site?
This site is roughly 14.7 acres.
Okay, so that'd be under 50 homes, correct?
About 126, I believe, is.
Three times, yeah. Okay. What would be the, what would be the difference in density? Because this is the issue here. R1, R2 in destiny, units per that site? Just, just roughly.
Well, you got 120, just figuring 125 divided by, let me just run it out for you here.
Because again, this is a zoning, but I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around how many units would be in there? How many living facilities would be there?
15. So you'd have about eight and a half units per acre.
So we would jump from three units per acre to eight? Okay.
I think that's a fair assessment.
Okay, that gives me an idea of maybe the board and, an idea of what's going on here. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Why'd you come with the R2 in that office, or maybe a mixed-use, a commercial in office, or?
R2 is what we, our studies have indicated is in demand in Macomb Township and in this area. And as far as the, Mr. Oliver, you made a, you had a good point, but what I'd like to caution the planning commission is that, you know, you said you're going from three units per acre to eight units. However, the apartments, you know, will be occupied typically by one or two people, whereas a single-family homes will consist of, you know, three, four, perhaps five family members in each house, so.
And I appreciate that. The reason why I raised that question was, was, I'm, I'm trying to get the, the consistency of the surrounding area and how that's going to fit.
Right.
So, thank you. Anything else you want to add to that?
No, well, the one thing we would like to mention is, on the east side of the property, there is already a screening wall, a six-foot-high Mason screening wall, and I believe there's a 66-foot-wide utility easement. So there will be plenty of buffering, you know, between the proposed development and the residential to the east, and of course, should the rezoning be granted, we would have to develop it under the R2 zoning district, which has other requirements also relative to, as Mr. Maher indicated, setbacks and open space, you know, and all, all those other criteria, so.
Thank you.
And to that point, Mr. Chairman, in my calculations, I haven't, I haven't deducted right-of-way, I haven't deducted.
My question was not to zero in on an exact, just to kind of get an idea of where, where the area is, the surrounding areas, to the density that it could be. Okay? That was my only intention, not to, I just need the facts.
That's fine.
Yeah, and maybe get a mental visual of it.
Right.
Okay.
A good point.
Anyone else on the board wants to ask any questions to the petitioner? Okay, this time I'm going to bring it to the public. Anyone in the public on this item? Please come to the podium, sir.
My name is Ron Jenkort, and my wife Diane, and we live in the condominium complex Hunter's Point.
Can we get your address too, sir?
Sure, 52918 South Hunter's Point Drive.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyway, this is our first exposure to it. I don't know if anybody else in here is aware of this project, but I heard, is there a rendering? Is there a?
This, this right now is a, is a rezoning, okay?
Is that the first step?
That's the first step.
Okay.
On this property.
All right, so there's going to be other meetings and so forth?
Yes, sir. Yep, yeah. If it moves forward, then there'll be other steps, and all the, all the township departments will see them, interject everything into that, and they'll just keep making its way.
I guess we'll just wait for that, because I was just interested in the architecture, how it blends in with that particular area.
Sure.
And there are some other apartments, facilities there, I think, just west of CVC.
And this is why we bring this to the public, so we get the input of?
Okay.
Of the public, okay, but we can't help you on your question.
Yeah, we're just looking for some visuals, that's all.
Okay.
And I'd have more questions on it, but we'll save that.
Thank you.
For it.
Later. Anyone else, ma'am?
I'm Ann Courtney. I reside at 4533 Diamond Pond Drive, Macomb Township, and I am referring to section 10.1001. It's a multifamily high-density district, does not serve these directives. There are better places to put a residential multiple family high-rise density district in Macomb Township that would better serve owners and renters. It will increase congestion and hazards to life and property on an already high-traffic intersection for the existing citizens in the area. It will not provide desirable light and air to the residences existing in subdivisions along Heidenreich Road and M59. A high-rise does not fit with the aesthetics of the surrounding properties. In conclusion, the neighborhood would be better served to keep the zoning at C-2. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, no, I think that was the wrong rezoning. She was talking?
Yeah, we're doing the 24-mile right now, but, that's all right.
Anybody else on this item? Okay, the item, the item that we're on, so this way everyone had a chance to speak on it, was the item on 24 Mile Road. Okay, just want to make sure everyone is aware of that. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If there's no further questions, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Shudo to close the public meeting. Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Mr. Maher indicated a procedure that we were going to take tonight. The board still can act on it if they want, but if, if they also want to act on the procedure that Mr. Maher laid out, we also can do that. Comments or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to postpone the action on the rezoning for our standard procedure.
To the next meeting?
October 15th?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Motion by?
That's on parcel 0807-300016.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski to postpone this to the October 15th meeting, seconded by Mr. Shudo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Does the petitioner have any problem coming to that meeting on October 15th?
Will, will there be any additional input at that meeting, or is it just for the decision?
It's going to be a decision only.
Decision only?
Yep.
Public will have no input. We'll make sure representative, if I can't attend, we'll make sure representative is here.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to extend you that courtesy.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Six C. Rezoning request, general commercial C2 to residential multiple family high-density R2H. Permanent parcel 0833-400019, located on northwest corner of Hall Road and Heidenreich Road. Section 33. Selmar Royal Village LLC petitioner. Mr. Maher?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request on 11 point, roughly 11.42 acres of land to go from C2, and this one is to our multiple family high-density designation. And again, as with the last one, the master plan does point this out as a commercial area for future use. In this particular case, you know, it's surrounded by some O1, there is some R2L to the north. There's C2 to the east where the Home Depot exists, and some other retail uses, Target and so forth. To the south, you had Hall Road in Clinton Township, some industrial uses, and to the west, you have the Aspen Bar and some offices behind, behind that use, including a bank. You know, again, as part of this, it is inconsistent with the master plan. Hall Road does generate a large amount of traffic, and, you know, typically would be the place we would look for this higher-intensity type use. The master plan, I note, does focus the higher-density residential to the, more to the west in the community, over between Hayes Road and Romeo Plank Road, and seems to have created a little enclave of this higher-density designation over there. And that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Again, I've recommended that after we hear public comments and the planning commission's able to get their findings of fact tonight, that you follow standard operating procedure and postpone action on this till the following meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Kalas, you're?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. Again, my name is Tom Kalas, 31350 Telegraph Road, Suite 200, Bigham Farms, Michigan. I'm here this evening representing the applicant, Selmar Royal Village LLC. And again, this is our petition to actually downzone the property from its current C2 general commercial use to an R2H residential multiple high-density. This property consists of approximately 11.4 acres. It's located on the northwest corner of Hall and Heidenreich Road. Our proposed rezoning is, is more of a transitional-type zoning with the surrounding zoning districts, as indicated by Mr. Maher. You do have some R2L residential multiple to the north, along with a office building, medical-type clinic. You have commercial to the west of the property. On the south side in Clinton Township, you'll find industrial and retail uses, and to the west of us, our restaurant and office uses. We feel that this R2H proposed development is consistent with the surrounding area, provides for a nice transition from the more intense uses around it and more intense zoning districts, and it's on Hall Road. If anywhere, you know, if you're going to locate high-density residential anywhere, Hall Road is obviously the place. Some of it, or most of your R2H is on the west side of township. There's hardly any on the east side of the town. There's hardly any on the east side of the township where we're located. We feel this will be an ideal location for such use. There is obviously demand for rental units, apartment rentals, especially a long-haul road on both Clinton Township and Macomb Township side. The proposed use is compatible with that area, it's marketable, and it's economically feasible. So, we would also add that, you know, the R2H does allow for buildings up to 10 stories high. That's not, and we're not indicating that's what will be built there. Obviously, if the rezoning is granted, we have to follow the R2H zoning criteria and requirements for development and construction. But again, these will be apartment units, very nice apartment units, you know, that are in demand, and we feel that the requested rezoning is compatible with the surrounding area, and we would kindly request that you recommend approval of it. I'm here again to answer questions, as is my client. So with that being said, we'll leave it up to the planning commission and the public.
Thank you. Commissioners? Nothing on this?
Well, I have a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Why R2H instead of R2?
R2H allows for a higher density, which we feel is appropriate for Hall Road.
Okay, thank you.
And the R2 and the other, on the other one was because it's a single-family residential surrounding. We felt that was more obviously appropriate for that area. But Hall Road, R2H is the appropriate use.
I have a question, Mr. Callas. If that building was built, would that be one single building, or would it be stacked and spread out? Just a vision.
Plans have not been finalized, and that's part of the reason why we didn't submit this as a conditional rezoning, because our engineers and architects are still working on what's best for that location under the R2H district.
Okay. Again, commissioners, no more questions on this item?
I just, after observing the site, it just appeared that the C2 seemed to be more appropriate only by going down Hall Road further to the, to the east and trying to imagine, in worst case, a 10-story building there.
Okay.
So.
Alrighty. Okay, at this time I'm bringing it to the public. Ma'am? It, we could, we could, no, you don't have to, because we could file that. Mr. Maher, can we just file her on this item, or does she have to go through and reread it again?
Let her try it again.
Well, no.
Come on!
Just hold on, hold on, just.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I think, obviously, public input is to make you as commissioners, who are the voting members, aware of issues that concern them, and I think you have heard that concern, so.
Yeah.
The public record really has nothing to do with.
I understand.
Anything of, your motion is the only thing that will end up mattering when all is said and done.
Ma'am, we're going to file your statement there, okay? But thank you for coming in. Anyone else on this item? Sir?
Mr. Chairman, just to.
I just wanted to ask a question.
I'll catch you after this.
Good evening, my name is Graziano Bongiorno, and I live at 45364 Delmar Drive. And I know that, maybe I didn't catch it correctly, anything else? At this moment, if I understand, we're talking about that there could be a possibility of a 10-story, you know, housing, you know, in that location on Heidenreich.
What we're doing now, sir, we're, we are doing a zoning request.
Okay.
Okay, right now it's zoned for kind of what's there, office, restaurants, small business. But the request is to change that to a higher-density zoning, and that's where we're at right now. So, right now, we're taking the public input on that.
Okay.
Okay, because we like to hear what the public, because this is your community in your area that you live in, I'm assuming, so.
Yes.
So we, we need to take public comments right now.
Okay.
Okay? But.
Thank you.
You got something to offer?
No, I've just.
You just want to know the system?
No, I just want to know, yeah, this is the first time I've ever done.
That's good, okay.
You know, any kind of meetings, like.
We're happy you come.
And just to find out, so technically then, there will be another meeting?
Yes.
Future, on this issue.
Yep. Just watch, watch on the agendas and watch for this meeting, because I don't think we send it out, we send notices out anymore, do we, Mr. Maher?
No, we won't be sending notices for any more rezoning detail.
Yeah, on these, on these items.
You know, if they file a special land use that requires a public notice, and, and as well as if they file a site plan, we'll also do a public notice.
Okay.
So at that point, we would have the building elevations. And just for the public's benefit, when we talk about a rezoning which is being considered tonight, it's basically a request by the applicant to trade use rights. So what he's asking is, right now he has the right to do commercial, office, retail-type uses on the site. He is asking for a high-density, multiple-family designation right now, the R2H. So he is asking for all the rights that come with that zoning, which would include the potential for a 10-story building. So it's important that everyone understand that nuance.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
And, Mr. Chairman, just for, you know, I had, in the previous issue, disclosed that under the R2 district, the applicant would be allowed one unit for every 5,000 square feet. Under this designation, it's one unit for every 3,500 square feet of land area. So just, so you have an understanding of the comparison.
Yeah, that gives, that gives me a, again, a visual. Okay, on it, ma'am? Hold on, hold on. If you have a comment, you have to come to the podium, please.
I know this is a zoning issue.
First, we need your name and address.
My name is Marcia Albertson.
Pull the mic down.
Hello.
There you go.
Okay.
And just state your name and address clearly, so we can get it on record.
My name is Marcia Albertson, and I live at 45453 Diamond Pond, where I would be looking out at the back of this change that we're discussing today. My, my thing is, we're not totally against it, but a 10-story or anything, to me, that's above even a two-story, doesn't belong there. We fight the traffic, we don't really want to look at the back of this kind of building. We have no idea yet, I know, of what it's going to look like. And that's our biggest concern, too. So I just want us to have some consideration as the people that live around there. And that's really my biggest concern, so that's all I have to really say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Sharon Sokolowski, I live at 45440 Diamond Pond Drive. And I guess my main concern would be the traffic. We have numerous grade schools, we have school buses, we have three schools within a mile of this area. Traffic from Heidenreich onto Hall Road is a disaster on a daily basis, and I can't imagine what it would be like if we had multiple families and apartments coming off onto Hall Road, and I'm sure there's, have to be different exits other than Hall Road. I mean, the traffic right now is a horror story during rush hour. Even with the expansion and all the repaving, right now the corner of Hall Road and Heidenreich is like a mess. And I know they're redoing it, but how long is it going to be before those roads start to deteriorate again as we get more people that are going to be living on that corner? That's all, just wanted to bring that to the attention.
Thank you. Just for the public's information, this, if these projects go forward, they, they end up in the hands of the county, the hands in all our department, probably the state of Michigan, too. So it, it is a process, and all that stuff gets checked, so just so everyone understands that. Okay, at this point, anyone else on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back, I'll close the public motion, bring it back to the board for comments, motions. Mr. Maher stated that we could postpone this, or we could act on it. He's recommended that we postpone it, but we also can act on it if you want.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to postpone this action on rezoning per our standard procedure on property number 0833400019.
For how long?
Till the. 15th.
Mr. Callas, we talked, we kind of jumped the gun on the 15th, is that?
That's fine.
That'll work for you?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. I get a motion by Mr. Kuzminski to postpone this till the October 15th meeting. Is there a support for this?
Support.
Support by Mr. Hardy, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, old business. Side ordinance discussion. I think all our commission members have got their new sign ordinance. It's, Mr. Maher, could you kind of go over some of that with us?
Yeah, just, Mr. Chairman, so I'll go back a little bit. The sign ordinance I handed out was simply a sample, you know, that I started preparing for Washington Township. I think it's easily adaptable. I've stolen some of your ordinance and some of their ordinance, and taken hopefully some good points out of each, and it still needs some work. The, we had a Court of Appeals decision in the state of Tennessee, I should say it involving the state of Tennessee with regard, which involves their state billboard regulations, which are very similar to the state of Michigan's, where the Court of Appeals basically said, based on the Supreme Court decision from two years ago, they find the state act invalid. So, there's a number of issues that come from that with regard to onsite and offsite signs. The Court of Appeals originally said, you can't differ, if you have to read the sign to understand if it's onsite or offsite, then it's content-based. When the opinions came out, I can't remember which one of the justices at that point indicated that he didn't feel that applied to billboards, because billboards are looked at more as a property rather than a typical sign. That being said, the Court of Appeals differed and said, while that opinion was given by one of the majority, it wasn't part of the actual decision written up by Justice Thomas, and therefore it doesn't apply. So, I, I need to reexamine what we did with billboards in there. I will thank Mr. Bentley for giving me some comments on it, which could help both communities, so I'll mention that you helped them as well. And we'll take a look at that, hopefully come back with a new draft for you.
Okay.
And if I got time, I'll make it a Macomb Township draft.
Who gets credit?
There you go.
Anyone else on the side ordinance? No discussion? Okay, all right. Impervious surface requirement decision, we probably have, have we come to a decision on that, Mr. Maher?
We, we had some discussions. I know Mr. Tuckfield was extremely interested in how this played out. I had, came up with a little bit of language, I didn't hand it out tonight, because I figured the meeting would go on all night, and we wouldn't want to deal with this tonight, but just, you know what, let me just hand it out, so. And we can run through it, and then you guys can take a look at it, and we can make a decision or have some more analytical discussion at the following meeting.
Thank you.
But basically, what this. Yeah, so basically, the. The concern that the commission had was that when someone doesn't meet the impervious surface ratio, the ordinance did not provide for a variance. I sat down with the building director, we talked a little bit about what that means overall to the residential concrete ordinance, and he does not, and nor do I, think it's appropriate to have a zoning board of appeals determine whether or not three inches of concrete or four inches of concrete or six inches of concrete is appropriate. So we wanted to limit the variance discussion to the item of impervious surface, which does have more of a planning impact. So, we added a paragraph to Paragraph F of the residential exterior concrete ordinance, which deals with impervious surfaces, so I'll just read it out loud, so everyone can follow along. Impervious surfaces such as housing units, accessory buildings/structures, concrete, asphalt, brick pavers, wood decking/planks, and compacted stone sands shall not exceed 50% of the total property area. And pools shall not be considered an impervious surface, however, the decking, concrete, or pavers, both pervious and impervious, and similar materials poured or placed adjacent to the pool shall be included in the pervious surface calculation. So to take a step back, the intent of the ordinance is to say, we want 50% of your yard, front and back, in some form or fashion, to be lawn and landscaping, not concrete, even if it's impervious or pervious bricks. The idea being that, yeah, we'll get some groundwater infiltration through those types of materials, as we will a deck, but at some point, you simply don't want to see an entire backyard or an entire front yard filled with concrete. It can tend to devalue an area, particularly if every resident decides to do that. Now that being said, there are certain situations that we discussed where we have smaller lots or perhaps lots of different shapes or sizes that may warrant some type of variance from that 50% number. So, the amendment that we primarily focused on is this. A variance may be sought from the zoning board of appeals to vary the terms of this paragraph. Such a variance shall only be granted by the zoning board of appeals upon a finding that a practical difficulty in meeting the terms of this paragraph due to a unique condition, size, or shape of the property, and unfortunately, it should say, exists or can be determined. So I'll have to work on that language, but the concept is to say, there must be something physical about the property that prevents you from meeting this 50%. And maybe you're not able to do what your neighbors are able, because you've got a 65-foot lot instead of a 70-foot lot. I'll be honest, I went through a lot of it. Joe and I kind of played with this a bit to see what would be a real practical difficulty that you wouldn't be able to hit that 50% mark. About all we could come up with is that perhaps you have a smaller lot than most of the lots within the community. So, you know, outside of that, we'd have to leave it to the ZBA to see if they felt there was a practical difficulty.
So what you're saying is, your, our standard is 70 by 120, you don't see a problem with those?
You know, we, we went through so many different areas and lots, and measured out areas of impervious surface, and I would say with very, very few exceptions, did anyone exceed the 50% rule. And when they did, it was usually excessive.
Okay.
But, you know.
Yeah.
It's something, I, you know, we can also look at increasing it to 55 or 60. My only thought is, is you increase it to 55, and someone wants 56. You increase it to 60, and someone wants 61. So, at some point, you just have to decide, how much do you as residents of the community want to recommend to the board for that overall coverage? Because you, just like the residents. Because you, just like the residents in the community, may suffer from your neighbor putting, you know, what may be considered an excessive amount of concrete or...
That new part of it is, how old is that? My question is, we were at what?
You did not have an impervious surface ratio. We decided to address it after we had some sport courts that wanted to be put into yards and larger driveways that seemed excessive for the particular lots.
I mean, personally, I think 50% is pretty generous.
Pretty standard in many communities, you know, for single-family residential. Some might go a little bit higher, some go to 45%. So...
Because when you do the math, this, in my head, 20, 120 by 70 is 8,400 square feet, so you're looking at four, roughly 4,000 square feet of hard surface. That's a lot.
That includes the building also, so...
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question regarding the 50%. And maybe it's an engineering question. Usually infiltration depends on the types of soils that we have, and the size of our storm, or if it's combined storm and sewer systems. And better the, or the more infiltration you have, obviously, for some older systems that can't handle the volume, especially as we continue to develop down the road, I would imagine that that percentage is going to be a factor in the sizing of these, these systems. And as well, we, we've experienced what everybody seems to perceive as more flood events, and with less and less infiltration allowed per site, to increase it might be, you know, an issue. And so, I would imagine, we'd have to kind of lean on engineering to kind of tell us, where's that go in the future? You know, what are the plans, and can it be handled? And it's not just an aesthetic thing, that I'd like to have more paving, pavers, or what have you, but, but we need to think about how we're going to handle all that, that water, if we're going to capture it, then it goes to our storms, or it runs off into our, into our...
Blood plane.
Blood plane areas and storm systems that can't handle it. So...
Yeah, and that's a good point. I skipped right over my buddy's concerns over here, so, but yes, it's obviously something that, you know, we did have to think about with the, you know, having some, and Jim can comment on that, but certainly having some areas that slow runoff a little bit, and allow it to infiltrate into the ground, and, you know, not flood out the neighbors necessarily.
Currently, the way a subdivision is designed is, the assumption is 35% of the water that falls within the boundary of the subdivision ends up somewhere in the storm sewer system. So, as, yeah, as you increase the amount of hard surface on the, in the development, on the individual lots, you have more runoff, for sure. So, but we do have, there has been a change in the stormwater standards that the county has, and obviously, that affects all the developments in the township. They do require detention, so that doesn't affect necessarily the downstream, but it does affect the storm sewer system that's on the site. It can also overwhelm a detention basin if it's sized, you know, for a certain amount of water to be running off that development. If it increases, now you've got the higher chance of an overflow situation. So, it is a concern.
I have a question. Mr. Sorey?
Thank you.
Do you think that this should go to the ZBA for variance? The request for going over 50%? Or should we look at it a case a case, or, I mean, this seems like kind of a tricky situation, that if we allow it for one, how can we not allow it for another? I just want your opinion, if you have one right now.
You'd have to have some process where you permit it. Either it comes in here with, with approval in front of the planning commission, or either it comes in here from, into the planning commission for approval, or goes through the zoning board of appeals. The, the benefit of coming to the planning commission to review it would be is that, in a sense, the planning commission is more, you know, is designed better to essentially negotiate with the, with the individual applicant and redesign in the process, whereby typically that's frowned upon with the ZBA from a granting perspective. But there has to be some standards somewhere, so...
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Sorey.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just as a follow-up to that, if the ZBA or we are going to be requested for these, these higher percentages, that maybe we be given, maybe from engineering, similar information that we received tonight, you know, based upon the new requirements, and based upon 35% is usually going into the systems. It's those kinds of details or facts that we need if we're going to make any kind of, have a discussion that really is, is worth having, I guess, as opposed to just a 50% or 60% looks okay, or what have you. So, if you could give us some ammunition or some basis of the infrastructure designs, that would be very helpful when we, or it should be forwarded to engineering for that kind of a question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? Mr. Maher?
Yes, sir.
Are you looking for direction tonight on this?
No, I just wanted to put this in your hands tonight, go over it briefly, and get some feedback, so...
Maybe the 15th, we could put this to rest?
Yeah, we'll bring it back onto the agenda again, and we'll have a little bit more input at that point.
All right. Okay. Nothing else on that? Item eight, public comments, non-agenda items. Does anyone have anything on non-agenda? Okay. Be a nun. Bring it back to the board. Commissioners' comments. Nobody. Quiet tonight. Okay. All right. McComb Township Board of Trustee Liaison, Mr. Krzminski.
Just a couple items. The, the items that were approved was Wolverine Estates North Side condominiums, also the plan review for the Riverview Estates site condominiums, and also, we, we gave a, for dinner with farms, a special event for, for them to sell their wares over the next five, five weeks, open the weekend to sell normally the pumpkins and everything.
Fall holiday stuff.
Yeah, so we approved that.
Thanks for supporting the farmers.
Yep. Anything for you, Charlie.
All right. Okay. That's it? That's it. Thank you, Mr. Krzminski. Our ZBA liaison is not here tonight, so we're going to skip over that. Planning Department items.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else tonight. Thank you.
Before we move any further, should we excuse member Tuckfield from the meeting?
You don't, that probably might be the best idea right now.
I think we should do that right now. Before we adjourn, I'd like to make a motion.
Support. Okay, motion by Mr. Shudo, supported by Mr. Krzminski, to permanently...
Excuse him.
Excuse him from this meeting.
I just thought we should, I just figured we should do it before we adjourned.
Yeah, because I don't think he's going to make it. Okay. Thank you. With that, I'm looking for an adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shudo?
Second.
Supported by Mr. Bentley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.